I was just thinking, we're also scheduled.
February nineteenth, Newmarket Town Council meeting. If we can all stand and do the President's Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands.
Let me just to fly the United States of America.
And to the republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all. Okay. And before we get started this evening, Counselor Cast is unable to be here tonight, but she is with us. So Counselor Cast, I just need to ask you a couple of questions. Counselor Cast can, oh, sorry.
Was it reasonably?
Oh, yeah. Was it reasonably unpractical for you to attend this evening?
Yes.
And then is there anyone in the room with you?
No.
Okay. If there's no objection, we can just then proceed.
The Chair cannot attend this evening due to a family conflict that came up.
Okay, so I'm the Chair tonight. Okay. So the first item on the agenda is the public forum, and we will open public forum at seven oh two. If anybody wants to speak.
It's all been good. Perfect. Hello, Newmarket Town Council and those of you watching the video. My name is Christian Matthews. I live at thirty-one Kimball Way with my wife Nicole and my dog Cabot. I currently serve on the Newmarket Budget Committee and am running for town council. I'm just about to finish up my first year there on the Budget Committee professionally. I serve as the Transportation GIS Analyst for Rockingham Planning Commission, which covers most of Rockingham County, unfortunately not Newmarket. Combining the insights gained from Budget Committee along with the analytical capabilities I developed in my career, I'm running for town council for three specific reasons: affordable housing, environmental sustainability, and fiduciary responsibility. As a transportation analyst, I've done enough research to know that we must change our development patterns, albeit a voice and a vote for easing our overly restrictive zoning ordinances that have and are contributing to not only the affordable housing crisis we have in our region, but also the countless future financial liabilities that we are locking ourselves into. Changing our zoning ordinances to incentivize compact development and infill will increase access to affordable housing and continue us on the path towards environmental sustainability. However, our town will continue to need to reduce our environmental impact, and I will vote for policies that support that goal. One area that I am particularly interested in is a discussion the town council is currently having, an urban compact zone. An urban compact zone will allow us to control our downtown, to improve its walkability and bikability, create a pedestrian-oriented area not dominated by cars. With this, it is important for all of us to realize that almost every decision we make will affect Newmarket residents as taxpayers. While I hope that zoning changes will increase the revenue brought in, it is always important to track long-term spending to ensure that we are not growing too fast for individuals and families to budget. As a board member of Oyster River Women Aid, a nonprofit that provides financial assistance when people are in need, a couple hundred dollars in unexpected expenses is all it takes for families not to be able to afford medical school supplies or rent. While it isn't glamorous, I will always prioritize the proper maintenance and upkeep of our current public infrastructure projects before expanding with new projects. While I'm not on social media, I hope to get this message out to the voter, as many voters as possible over the next few weeks. If you'd like to chat, you can email me at christianfornewmarket@tuta.io. Hopefully they can see it. Thank you very much for your time. Again, I hope you'll vote for me, Christian Matthews, for town council on March tenth.
Thank you. And there is nobody else from the public that would wish to speak, so we will close public forum at seven oh six. Okay. The next on our agenda tonight is the public hearing for Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash eighteen, the operation of sports betting in the town of Newmarket. I'll accept a motion.
You just need to open public.
Just open public, we will open public hearing. And there is, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. The purpose of this public hearing is that pursuant to our say, no more than, no less than fifteen and no more than thirty days prior to the vote, the council needs to have a public hearing. You mean to take no action this evening since it's already on the ballot?
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. And since there is nobody from the public that is here, we will go ahead and close public hearing. So the next, we will consider acceptance of the minutes. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes from the February fifth, twenty twenty meeting?
I'll make a motion to accept, to approve the minutes from February fifth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Sorry.
You can look at the screen, because if Counselor Cast, it's.
Oh, right. Sorry. Okay. All right. And there is no discussion.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay. Next is the Town Administrator Report.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. The first item is I want to publicly thank all the election officials and staff and volunteers for making both the delivery session and the presidential primary go as smooth as possible. Both the town delivery session as well as the election, we've thrown curveballs right before with the town session as well as having to switch rooms for the election, but everything went on perfect. And I just wanted to congratulate, commend everybody. The next item, as the council is aware, Newmarket as well as other municipalities in the Great Bay region has received a new draft permit from the EPA and DES for their waste, for the wastewater plant. The EPA's draft permit allows the communities to keep nitrogen levels from the wastewater plants at current, at current levels. But the draft permit then requires the communities to follow a twenty-three year state plan that calls for forty-five percent reduction from non-point source pollution, such as stormwater runoff. I'm not sure how much this will cost the town, but it is estimated at this point for the groups that have wastewater plants to cost over one billion dollars. The Environmental Service Director is currently attending a public hearing on the draft permit at NHDES's office at peace. We've also secured the services of McLean Law Firm to represent us on this matter, as our previous environmental attorney has retired. I am asking tonight that there is a resolution authorizing me to send a letter requesting peer review of the permit that all the other municipalities affected are deciding, and I'm asking the council at that point in time to suspend the rules, to act on it this evening due to the time, it's time sensitive. On my unwritten report, this evening, prior to this meeting, the town player, myself, and our economic development consultant hosted a meeting with property owners in what we're referring to as the South Gateway. As the council is aware, we've had three areas highlighted as potential for economic development. One is North Main Street for the continuation of urban infill. One is one fifty-two for the village concept. And tonight, we discussed what the concept would be for South Main Street, which would actually almost be a recreational district. Looking at what is already there, it makes sense that with a golf course, a gym, as well as the rockhand ballroom, and the terminus of the rail trail, that we would look at some kind of recreational development. As you're aware, the town owns a significant piece of land as the Wilson property as well as another parcel. What we'd be discussing is a multi-use trail system, very popular in other parts of the state, which have also spurned small economic developments such as breweries, stores that help these recreational items, and restaurants, because there'd be biking and then something else, they'd have something else to do after. We think it's good for that area due to the fact that it'd be low impact on the environment. You're not going to impact the neighborhood that much because we've got access of one oh eight, as well as minimal impact on the bay since it's so close to that as well. It's very, very preliminary. The next step would be to have a joint meeting with the council and the planning board once we hammer this out, and probably that would be late spring, early summer to do that. I just wanted to let the council know that that's where we are with that. And that's all for tonight, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have committee reports. Does anybody have any committee reports? Seeing none. Okay. And we will move on to old business. So we have a couple of resolutions. The first one is Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash twenty, wastewater treatment facility maintenance building roof replacement. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash eighteen. Oops, sorry, dash twenty. Wastewater treatment facility maintenance building roof replacement.
Thank you.
Second.
Apologies.
That's okay. All right. Any discussion, Steve?
Do you have all the backup information? It's pretty self-explanatory. There are three. They did go with, below us there, and there, there is a contingency in there. One of the problems is once you open a roof, you don't know what you may find. So there is some contingency there. They are recommending go with LGR for fifty-nine thousand dollars, and there's currently one point four million dollars in the Water Department Capital Reserve Fund. So it's more than enough funds to cover that.
Great. Okay. And Counselor Cast?
Actually, I had a department report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can do it after the resolutions. Do you want to move it till?
Okay. All right, we'll circle back then. That's all right. Sorry. Okay, any discussion, questions, comments? Okay, I think we can call the roll.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
I think we'll do the next resolution, then circle, I'll circle back to the committee report. That's all right? Okay. All right. So the next resolution we have tonight is Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash twenty-one, Moody Point Water Main Extension Project. I would seek a motion.
I'll make a motion to. Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash twenty-one, Moody Point Water Main Extension Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Steve?
Just the background, as you know, we've entered a new agreement with Moody Point to extend the water main located on Bay Road to the Moody Point Water System. Moody Point will reimburse the town through betterment fees. We have performed some preliminary engineering for Moody Point, and we received a contract from Ray Pierce for one hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars to finish that engineering. What we need is just, they are our engineer of record for water projects, so we, that's why there's not any bids on this one. They've already brought us to this point. We just need to continue on. In addition, this would only bring the water to their system, and they continue to maintain the system inside their facilities. And I just recommend it's passage.
Okay, thank you. We have Counselor Dumont.
Just a quick question for the Town Administrator. Forgive me for not remembering. What was the timeline on this project?
Hopefully this year.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I think.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now circling back to the committee report, Counselor Cast.
Yes, I just wanted to circle back to the council to let them know that the planning board has consensus to move forward the topic of the AUs in detached structures to the next agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Let's see. Next, we have some nominations to consider. The first one is Peter Sotwell, application for, I'm opening it up, sorry, Ad hoc Riverfront Advisory Committee. I would take a motion.
Make a motion to accept Peter Sotwell to the Ad hoc Riverfront Advisory Committee.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Just thank you. All right, you can go ahead and call the roll.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor. Motion passes six zero.
And we have a second nomination to consider, which is Gabe Goldberg for the Riverfront Advisory Committee. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Gabe Goldberg to the Ad hoc Riverfront Advisory Committee.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you as well. Okay, you can go ahead and call the roll.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Yes, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Resolutions in the first reading. Resolution two, twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-two, purchase of twenty twenty Transit three fifty passenger RWD high roof van. Whereas the Recreation Department seeks to purchase a new twenty twenty-four Transit three fifty passenger RWD high roof van, one hundred forty-eight inches WBXL, state bid price of thirty-five thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars from group pony Ford. And whereas the Rec Department's request includes the cost associated with purchasing of running boards for passengers to step on, as well as cost associated with decal on the vehicle and logos. And whereas the Recreation Department Enterprise Fund account currently is a balance of five hundred twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. And the total cost. I'm sorry, the, including kickboard and decal, is estimated not to exceed thirty-five thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars. I'm reading this wrong. Whereas the total cost of vehicle, the total cost of the kickboard and decal is estimated to be five, five hundred twenty-five dollars. That's what it is. Therefore, now it would be resolved that the town, Newmarket Town Council, does hereby approve the withdrawal of the funds not to exceed thirty-six thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars from the Recreation Department Enterprise Fund for the purpose of purchasing and equipping the new twenty twenty-four Transit three fifty passenger RWD high roof van, one hundred forty-eight inches WBXL for the town, and authorize the Town Administrator to execute any associated agreements. First reading, February nineteenth, twenty twenty. The Engineering Service Contract with Underwood Engineering for the Splash Pad restroom project at Leo Landrush Field. Whereas Recreation Department seeks to, seeks, the town authorized to proceed with Underwood Engineering Inc. Request proposal dated February twelfth, twenty twenty. Whereas the budget cost to complete task one through three is stated in the Underwood Engineering ESR contract is thirty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars, which includes the costs associated with two, and Underwood Engineering Inc. subcontractors. Task two A, S. Services at seven thousand six hundred fifty dollars. And PE Electrical Consultants for three thousand dollars. And whereas the recreation department capital reserve fund, as of November twenty twenty, has a current balance of one hundred fifty-eight thousand one hundred twenty dollars. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Newmarket Town Council does hereby approve and withdraw the funds not to exceed thirty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars for the Newmarket Recreation Department's capital reserve fund for the purpose of contract with Underwood Engineering and modified design-build service contract with the town, and authorize the Town Administrator to enter any associated agreements. First reading, February nineteenth, twenty twenty. The next one. Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty twenty-five, acceptance for Honeycomb Way and Daybreak Drive as town roads. Whereas the developer, Eric J. Chinberg, AKA Rockingham Golf LLC of Three Penn Stock Way, Newmarket, New Hampshire, has requested Honeycomb Way and Daybreak Drive be accepted as town roads. And whereas a final inspection was done by Underwood Engineers, and the Newmarket Public Works Department has determined the road meets town standards and specifications for road acceptance. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that Honeycomb Way and Daybreak Drive be accepted as. First reading, February nineteenth, twenty twenty. The next resolution, Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash twenty-six, upgrading Vision Appraisal Camera System. Whereas the town of Newmarket will need a statistical update of all town properties earlier this year. And whereas part of this project, the town needs upgrade its computer-assisted mass appraisal software system, vision. Now therefore, be resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the Town Administrator is hereby authorized to enter an agreement with Vision Appraisal for camera system for the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. And the Town Administrator is hereby authorized to enter to an agreement with Vision Appraisal for cloud services with an annual payment of six thousand dollars. And that this pay will be paid by withdrawing set funds from the capital reserve, revaluation capital reserve fund. First reading, February nineteenth, twenty twenty. Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash twenty-seven, support and authorization for the requesting of peer review related to the NPDES general permit. Whereas on January seventh, twenty twenty, United States Environmental Protection Agency Region One released the Great Bay Total Nitrogen General Permit, NPDES permit number NHG five eight eight zero zero zero, twenty twenty draft permit as. General permit. And whereas, while the town of Newmarket wholly continues to appreciate and support new and innovative regulatory efforts to ensure the environmental integrity of Great Bay, certain aspects of the draft general permit are not the product of updated peer-reviewed scientific study of Great Bay in particular. And whereas outside consultants representing other municipalities in the Great Bay watershed have questioned the scientific validity of certain aspects of the draft general permit. And whereas, in addition to the proposed draft general permit, would likely have an adverse impact on development in Newmarket and virtually every Seacoast community in the Great Bay watershed, as well as necessit, necess, necessitate, necessitates, all right, significant expenditures from Newmarket of well over, I think it was three million dollars, and Seacoast communities collectively of potentially over one billion dollars. And whereas, given the importance of the regulatory decision being proposed, a scientific peer review of the draft general permit should be undertaken prior to any final permitting issue, issuing. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the Town Administrator is hereby authorized to submit a formal request to the state and federal regulators as can they undertake a scientific peer review of the draft general permit prior to any final permit issuing, and incorporate the findings from same into the requirements of any final permit. First reading, February nineteenth, twenty twenty. Madam Vice Chair. I would request that the council suspend the rules to act on this this evening.
Okay. So do you do a motion?
I accept the motion, yep.
Yep. I'll accept a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. If I can address it.
Yes, please.
As I said in my report, the DES and EPA have issued a new draft permit. While we would be staying at the same nitrogen levels, it would significantly impact us with the amount of runoff that we'd have to be treating. And I don't want to use the word treat, because that's ultimately, I think, where they want us to get, is have runoff treatment plants. But we would have to do a significant amount of work. There's questions on the science. The cities of Dover and Rochester hired a private consultant, and, which is, I don't want to go through the entire report, but has determined that there's some great questions that they don't believe that DES or the EPA have addressed while looking at the issue in a new draft report. And right now, they're all, all the municipalities in the Seacoast, including Newmarket, are at the public hearing, asking for a peer review. What we're just doing now is agreeing with the other municipalities and being able to sign a letter, just asking for a peer review, which means an independent scientist look at the, look at the facts and determine, yes, that, you know, either the state's right, and EPA's right, or there is concerns for what the municipalities have. There's no more than that. With all the stuff that we've invested recently, it's sort of like moving the goal line for us. And that's why, you know, we're not trying to say, we're not concerned about the bay. We're just trying to say, look, make sure it's sound science, because every time we do something, we can't have the goal line continue to move. So that's all we're asking.
All right. And I have Counselor Cast.
Yes, I'm supportive of a peer review. I think that, there's a reasonable argument for that. Just as background though, I was curious, how does this relate to, or does it overlap with the MS four, with the non-point source?
It does, which is, it's a good, great question. It's almost as if they're trying to implement the MS four by issue, holding up our permits for the wastewater system. You know, we've been looking at both separately, well, we've been. Bubble, but it's both separate issues. But there seems like that's what they're trying to do. And the big problem with that is, there's nothing they can hold against those communities that do not have wastewater system. That are also, any nitrogen that's coming off their properties into the Great Bay and into the watershed, because there's no permits they need. So you have large communities such as Barrington, Newington, oh, Newington has wastewater, I'm sorry, Greenland, Stratton, that, you know, there's ways that they can have nitrogen going into the Great Bay as well, but there's no way we can impact it. So we're just asking for a peer review to make sure the science is correct.
Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you. I don't see any other requests to speak.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
And was there any correspondence to the town council?
There was none.
Okay. And any closing comments? Oh, sorry. Counselor?
Just wanted to put a plug out for next Monday, February twenty-fourth. We'll be holding our third conversation with the council at the town library from six thirty PM to seven thirty PM, focusing on the town meeting, the town warrant, as well as a government one oh one for how local government works, and Q and A with some town council members. So hope to see you all there.
Thank you. And Counselor Sanders?
I just had something quick for Steve. Then I met with the Newmarket Business Association this month, and they were requesting some update on how we're progressing on the waste sign issue.
I just got a report from the MVA. I wanted to read it.
Okay.
And determine that, and then discuss it with the town planner.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And Counselor Kuiper?
I just have a quick question for the Town Administrator. Where exactly is the Wilson property?
It's off New Road.
Okay. Okay, that, is that the same one where we're talking about?
Solar.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Sorry, I was confused there, but now I know exactly where it is.
And Counselor Dumont?
Yes, having gone through the.
Having gone through the Budget Committee process for a second year, I know that there are always questions as we lead up to the actual vote on town meeting day. The school board, I believe, just recently had a budget work session to help folks get the budget that they're presenting. I believe that there's also another one coming up on Saturday, March seventh. They made a couple postings about that. But for folks who still have questions or concerns about either the school board budget or the town budget, there are a lot of resources out there. Please don't hesitate to ask us prior to the election, because it is important that you understand what is being presented. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see any other requests. So, with that, I think we can. Oh, our next council meeting is March fourth. And with that, I think we can adjourn. Thank you.
Here. Thanks.